I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic of which we are. I am about to introduce the Constitution.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the victims of the tragedy in Arizona. Thank you very much. Do you need a motion on the acceptance of the agenda as presented? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All motion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Post? Okay, we have the minutes of the village board, December twenty, the village board meeting of December twenty seventh, two thousand and ten. I need somebody to make a motion to accept the minutes? So, second? Okay, do we have any errors or omissions? Okay, I'm here now, I'm calling motion, all in favor, to accept the minutes? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post?
I'll wait second.
Sure.
Okay, can you?
All right, okay. All right, we have the village board work session of January third, two thousand and eleven. We need a motion to accept those minutes?
So.
Second?
Second.
Okay, is there any errors or omissions, corrections? Okay, we're going to call motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have some communications. We have alcohol beverage license renewal for the Goshen Village diner. She says he has no problem, it's standard, just kind of for information, it's just kind of letting us know. We have a request for use of the village hall. We have one from the county seat conservative club, do we have, do you have correspondence?
Conservation.
Yeah, the conservation club, I'm sorry. Uh, I heard from Steel Letter, December twenty first, please be advised, the county seat conservation publishes to be taken use in village hall, restricts meetings, we hold our meetings first Wednesday each month, from seven p.m. until approximately nine, we contact the village police, describe and close the meeting, and close and open the doors. And they have a list of meetings, truly yours, Robert Marshall, and do we have to vote to accept this? Make? Okay, can we get a motion to let the county seat conservative club use our?
Conservation.
What did they say?
You said conservatives, that may be, but still the conservation.
Still the conservation, thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, we have, uh, Orange County Youth Football. I want to thank you and the village trustees for past use of the village hall for our board meetings and county board meetings. I would like to request use again in two thousand and eleven, we would need to hold the fourth Wednesday of each month from six p.m. to approximately nine thirty, the dates are as follows. Thank you and very much for your help in this matter, sincerely, Larry James, County Secretary. Need a motion to allow the Orange County Football to use our facilities?
So.
Second?
So.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, last week we had the passing of firefighter John Sullivan, he was a local volunteer, plus he was, uh, Fire Department of New York, they had a, uh, very, I don't know what you call it, very appropriate funeral, it was, uh, they really turned out for it, and our police department and our fire department did an excellent job presenting the honors for this firefighter who passed way too young, and we got a nice letter from the City of New York Fire Department. Dear Chief Fuat, I'm writing to extend my gratitude for you for the allocating of the Goshen Police Department resources and crew of the Fire Department of New York, firefighter John Sullivan on December thirtieth, two thousand and ten. The traffic control and escort your department provided were very helpful in making the solemn event proceed in a dignified manner. I appreciate your department helping us honor our deceased retired member and showing support to the Sullivan family in a way that upholds the F, the NY traditions. Thank you again, sincerely, Salvatore J. Casino, Fire Commissioner. It was very nice, Fire Commissioner of New York sent me this letter saying what a good job the police department did. Very nice. Shows that we have a very good police department and we want to do our best. Okay, long acknowledgements from the Cancer Society, thank you for your dedication, support during the two thousand and ten late at night season, wishing you and your family happy holidays. And we have another letter from them, that was from, um, the director, and then we have the president, the CDO, who, who came here, who came, who came, lim, 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 society?
Limpo.
Limpo, society. I want to personally thank you, we leadership to fight against cancer because of dedicated business leaders like yourself. Society likes to work across North America, raised forty-five million dollars in two thousand and ten for blood cancer research services and patients and families, it's a seven million, seven million dollar increase over their year, which is a tremendous accomplishment. Very nice of them to send the letter, thank you, I don't know if anybody wanted it, uh, they had the late at night across the street, and Kyle and myself went, it was very well, they did a really nice job, listen, it was a nice event, and they, and they, uh, raised the money, so, you know, they raised a lot of money, so, it was really good, it's worthwhile causing the crowd to let them use our facilities. These things are sticking together with the heat, the heat and the weather. We have a letter to, uh, to the village. Please provide me with accounting of money, so I contribute to New York State Local Retirement System for my salary as mayor, two thousand and seventy, two thousand and nine. Thank you for your attention in this matter, sincerely, Robert F. Weinberger. Want to make sure the budget's what he so, really deserves. Then we have the abstract of vouchers. We need motions on bill examined by members of the board, approval of course for abstract two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, numbers nineteen and twenty, check numbers eight, eight, seven through one thousand and thirty-two, in the amount of four hundred fifty, four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, eighty-eight cents. Okay, need a motion on that?
So.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I just on the public note, I think we should say that these are already approved, remind them.
Yeah.
We're not being rude, you know, voting on it without looking at it, they've already been approved.
Okay, I'm, the business meeting, amended agreement on the CJ Nestie contract that we okayed last meeting. David, you want to go into what the amendments are?
Sure. We have correspondence from our consultant, the state of Cornerstone, which is very brief, so I'll read it to you, that it corresponded to date of December ninth, two thousand and ten, we provided an update to table three dash one, which had originally, originally been presented in our evaluation of alternatives, report submitted to the D E C last September two thousand and nine. The prices presented in table three dash one did not assume prevailing wage rates. As requested, we have revised table three dash one to incorporate prevailing wage rates. I think we all know that, um, we've been in communication with the Labor Department, they've been in communication with us, and advised us that their interpretation of this job is that it is a public workshop, does require prevailing wage pay, uh, prevailing wage payments. As a result of that, Cornerstone has prepared, has prepared an amended, um, analysis, which shows that the cost for disposal at Setica Meadows for alternate daily cover is now increased from sixty-nine dollars a ton to ninety-two dollars a ton. Disposal at that landfill is solid waste, has increased from seventy-five dollars a ton to ninety-eight dollars a ton. Disposal at the Keystone landfill has increased from, um, seventy-four dollars a ton to eighty-seven dollars a ton. Disposal at Almyra has increased from sixty-seven dollars a ton to a hundred and seven dollars a ton. They also analyzed the beneficial reuse, which would be, which would be the use of the material as a baseball field or somewhat a sports field, and obviously there hasn't been, that would be our, uh, preferred alternative in the five years that we've had the stockpile. We've tried, that has not been a feasible alternative. We are under orders from the D E C to dispose of the material, so even though that has gone from seventeen thousand tons to forty-four dollars a ton, that's not a realistic alternative. Repricing the Middlesex County landfill, um, is going to bring us from fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents a ton to seventy dollars and seventy-six, seventy dollars and seven and sixty-one cents per ton. That increase is directly related to labor costs and prevailing wage. There are, as Cornerstone has evaluated this, there are not many, there are not any alternatives, realistic alternatives for disposal of the material that the D E C has directed us to dispose of. This remains the most cost-effective alternative, um, but will result in a substantial increase in the cost of the project. Obviously, I've discussed it with the Labor Department, the mayor's discussed it with the Labor Department, and, um, we are where we are. So, if the board is inclined, the amendment to the agreement would be to, at paragraph two, we had priced out the, um, the per-ton amount for transportation and reuse as forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, that would be increased to fifty-four dollars and five cents, and a two dollars and fifty cents per ton for loading would be increased to sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents, for a prevailing wage rate for the truck driver is a sum two hundred percent increase from what the drivers would be to pay. And people wonder why businesses in New York.
What's your pleasure? I'm just, boy, you need a motion to amend the contract to reflect this, uh, change to get us into line with the prevailing rate?
I'll make the motion.
Need a second?
I'll look again.
Okay, any discussion?
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
I'd just like to make the comment, uh, this village has spent a long time, a long number of years, with various consultants and, uh, everyone involved trying to find the cleanest and best way to take care of this, and in earnest, uh, you just go to the date of September the ninth, uh, September in two thousand and nine, on the D E C motor that dated, uh, so have Hartley, and they filed the papers with them, and in all this time, nowhere on any of the state permitting agencies are those stimulating the village to deal with, but it's turned out to be a financial burden, but a much, a cleaner situation than was originally expected. At no time was this issue raised of prevailing wage, and, uh, once again, and I know we have to continue working with the Labor Department, so I guess and say how my guts really do churn over this, however, I would like to simply say that, uh, when the state hands down these mandates that little villages must function with, and the state on their own projects learn, and tries not to pay prevailing wage, I don't know how they cannot have notified us previous to this date, so that we could have been doing this absolutely as cleanly as we have approached every single aspect of this job. That's it.
Well, I would just add, I think, uh, they've covered all the bases pretty, pretty comprehensively on this. Obviously, the best possible outcome we could have had is we had found a baseball field, some market, somebody was going to build, that could have had this taken to, the D E C has been after us for years to move this stockpile, uh, no such beneficial reuse has ever shown up or come on the scene. This is the best case scenario that we've been able to develop, it's in the process of being moved as we speak, and it's the law. Labor Department has indicated that we have to pay prevailing wage, which I guess takes it from, I think I'm full of, Mr. Donovan, twenty-five dollars an hour, or something like eighty-five.
For the truck drivers.
For the truck drivers, but we have nowhere else to send it. So, we're faced with the reality that we have no other alternative.
I thought I'd just say that, you know, yes, no one's very happy tonight that it's going to cost more than we had hoped, but all the other alternatives too, when you factor in prevailing wage, prevailing to cost that much more as well, so then, the thing to me becomes, now we have to turn our attention to, we know this land is going to be freed up, probably in three to six months, correct David?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, correct. So, what I'd like to do in the next work sessions, to maybe start discussing, what are we going to do with this land? We have to try to figure out, it's going to open up a great opportunity for us, have something bad, we're going to get an opportunity here, and let's do it right. What to do with the land, so we can open that discussion in the next work session, start laying the foundation for that.
Yep. I can't say anything that has no relevance. Can I agree with all the other trustees? Okay, I've called a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, we have to set a public hearing for local law, law one, two thousand and eleven. Resolves to hold a public hearing, we want to set a public hearing for February fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, seven thirty. Consider consideration of adopting local law number one of two thousand and eleven, local law repealing sections five dash two, dash three, dash three of appendix, any of the code of the village of Goshen. We just want to repeal it, we're not a hundred percent sure, we want to hear from the public what they do with this, uh, concerns lighting and signage, all improvements made to the site shall be, shall not detract from the character of the neighborhood by producing excessive lighting or excessive sign, proliferation, recessed or period lighting, and landscaping ground signs shall be used. And basically, we're looking to, um, to change that, uh, because we just said you have to use it, we didn't say who's going to pay for it, and that becomes a problem, and also we have a note from Mike that we, this year, of course, is probably about three thousand a year, you all get that memo from Mike about the periodic lighting, so we have to either, come up with a way of funding it from the contract, or go back, you know, or go back to our O and R lights, because with these type of lightings, O and R does not do any maintenance or accept any responsibility, so if something goes down, it's up to us to replace it, or in a lot of cases, we, we have to bring an electrician to replace it, so we're going to, basically, what we're going to do is relook at this and see what we hear from the public to see what, how we want to do this. Okay, uh.
Before you leave that.
Oh, well, no, wait a minute, we didn't do anything.
Yeah, we're just setting a public hearing.
With, uh, so what I'll need is a, a motion to set the public hearing.
I'll move it for discussion.
Yeah, that's what we want to do, and, can I get a second?
One second.
Okay, now we're going, now.
Yeah, because I was wondering, is it really the whole thing we're looking to repeal or just the second sentence? If the first sentence just goes to, you're not going to have excess lighting or glaring heat, you know, or the first sentence, excuse me, I think it's going to the second sentence, we're looking to.
Well, we don't have, if, if we go back to, I'm saying, if, we go back to Orange and Rockland, we have no control over that. They put the lights up there, they burned it in somebody's window, then they burned it in somebody's window.
No, I'm just, that was an example, I'm just talking, that's one thing, to go to the brightness, if you will, of whatever light.
Which we have no control over.
We have control over, with O and R.
Yeah, yeah, O and R, they put the light, it's there to say, we were going to.
What we do on your O and Law though?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but we're looking, we're looking to see, maybe we'll keep it the same, or we might put, say, uh, any contract and replace, you know, putting lighting in their development will set aside funds so we can maintain this light, so, you know, it might be the same language, which is, uh, which is a clarification of how it's going to be paid for. But at this point, that's not, at this point, you know, because it doesn't say anything, the village.
Sir, I, I, uh, I'm sorry, David, if you're done.
Yes.
This was brought up as a topic of discussion, I thought we'd have an opportunity to gather the information, share it at a work session before we set a public hearing. I'd like to be able at a public hearing to have number one, thousand copies of the, of the alternate ways of funding, let's number two, get copies of the light, the period lighting that is provided by Orange and Rockland, and find out where, how other communities are funding this, and, uh, so if you're pushing this to, uh, set a public hearing, I would like to have enough time in order to be able to gather that information, so that the public has the alternatives made available to them, and as does the board, before they can make that decision.
I don't see the sense of urgency, I think we would have time to do the first thing that you suggested.
Yeah, we could, but we could still set the public hearing, give us enough time to.
That's what I have to do, are you.
To comment for it, but you know, like, uh, as you said, there's not, it's not urgency, but you know, everything counts, you know, so we want to get it done, because, you know, you wasted about, you used about three thousand dollars of funds, plus the, the time of the DPW people to go out there, check it out, find out what the problem is.
That's it, yeah, that's it more than anything.
Yeah.
And I appreciate.
No, no, I'm just saying, so, well, there's no, there's no, you know, new to do it, need to do it tomorrow, but you know, we'd like to do it, so we'll schedule, we'll set, you got a calendar, David?
But this isn't going to fix what's already done.
No, no.
It's just really going forward.
Forward, yeah.
And I think it's only going forward on, on newly approved subdivision.
Correct.
And I think there's, um.
Well, that's exactly the kind of thing that I wanted, we want to make sure.
And I think there's only one subdivision that I'm aware of, um, in the last, um, month or two, that got approved over by Still Acres.
Still Acres, yeah.
Yeah, which is a short cul-de-sac, um, which I don't think they're going to stop construction on any time soon, so, so you do have some time.
And we do have time.
Well, I'm not, I'm not looking for three months, I'm just saying, give us some time to gather that information from the other community and from, uh, Orange and Rockland.
So, if we set the schedule in March, right, the last work session in March, you got a calendar, David? You, you got a calendar on your clock? On your clock, on your phone, on your clock, get your clock, get around.
The public hearings were just the end of March.
Yeah.
We had a work session on this day.
That's what I mean, that's what.
Okay.
Sounds like where this public, uh.
So, we scheduled a public hearing for the last, our last meeting, which would be what date of March, the last meeting of March.
Twenty eighth, is that the twenty?
Yeah, but it's a.
It's up to the mayor. Twenty eighth, is that off?
Twenty eighth, this is, this is the fourth.
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth, uh, yeah.
First and third is the March twenty eighth.
Yeah.
March twenty eighth, so we want to schedule it March twenty eighth.
Twenty first, twenty first, the work session.
That's right.
Yeah, we can discuss it the twenty first, oh, and then.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, but we're just going to set the public hearing. So, you know, we'll discuss, you know, we can set time to discuss it, we just want to set the date for the public hearing. Okay, so, uh, so I guess I'll need a motion to set the public hearing for local law one, for March twenty eighth, two thousand and eleven?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing done, call the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another resolution, it ought to more actively reflect the duty responsibilities, Courtney Consigliere, title is hereby changed from Caesar Wintern to Deputy Treasurer. Need a motion on that?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll call the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
She's, uh, replacing, uh, Mary and doing a wonderful job. Okay, uh, we have a, abstract of vouchers, we already did that, right?
Yeah.
Time up, boom, boom, without the comments, okay. Comments from trustees? I'll see you.
Sure, uh, we were doing our three days taking down cooperation of Orange and Rockland and our team, uh, they have, were pulled off for two weeks, however, they will be back to try to conclude, uh, the work that we've already outlined for them, people who may request, and all of those creatures have been looked at to make sure that they, it's necessary for them to come down before they're taken. As well, there was a bad water main break since we last had our meeting, um, I'm feeling, and it took, uh, great effort on the part of our DPW crew, and nothing makes Michael happier, I don't think, than when he gets to deal with the water main break and get down there in the ditches with his men, uh, he did a phenomenal job in dealing with something that certainly, uh, had been causing great amounts of water, uh, to come to the surface, and installed a new fire plug in order to be able to balance out the system, uh, therefore, the positive came out of the water main break. I would also like to take a moment to say, uh, I know we give kudos to the DPW and the police, but the storm coming up, the last storm, when you go to, you know, I drive to Washingtonville to work, and I'm not knocking on Washingtonville, but every place else can't compete with how quickly our snow just picked up. It, it is truly amazing that we are functional so quickly, and, uh, kudos to them, because we have another people in common. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, that's, that's very true, that Mike's and his crew do a wonderful job. Mountain?
Uh, DPW activities, obviously, yes, I see, this is just stated, there was a major snowstorm on December twenty-sixth, crews working down, the downtown area, cleaning up for the next three days, and obviously they did a exemplary job, uh, no, uh, no glitches at all with our snow, and will in lots of other places. Uh, new batteries have been installed in all the parking meters, and, uh, the crews are in the process of taking down the snowflakes, uh, I didn't know what that meant at first, but now I realize what they mean, and there was another snowstorm on Friday, and again, as been mentioned, there's one on the way, that's it.
Thank you. Ted?
Uh, I had a chance this weekend to talk to Joe Passlock, we'll all get briefly, but I think on the seventh, we sent the COAL Island blessing, there was a problem, we're going to invite him, he too is going to come, and hopefully we can.
Oh, good.
Start moving forward instead of everyone being upset with each other.
Good idea.
So, he's definitely attending the conference that day.
Have they been notified?
I don't know, like.
The ball has been notified?
Yes.
Okay, great, so then that'd be good, then we just get everyone in the room and start moving towards the resolution of it. And then also, just as a reminder, as everyone says, it was snow on Wednesday, so they say, uh, no parking on village streets or village parking lots during snowstorms, so that, uh, to impede DPW with their snowing.
Thank you, great. Kyle?
Sewer, nothing to do with work, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow, lay right here at seven o'clock.
Now, Mr. Mayor, did you want public comments from us, you had indicated that you wanted to bring up the business of how we're going to pay for the removal of the stockpile?
Yeah, I have that on my list, thanks, yeah. Okay, uh, first I want to just mention to everybody in the audience that the, we're using the magnetometer based upon the issue that happened in Arizona, we apologize for being derelict, we want to make everybody's, everybody relax, and that's why we're doing it, uh, just to make everybody feel easy, you know, situations like that come up every once in a while, and we want to make everybody feel a little bit more relaxed. Also, uh, I met with, uh, again, with Representative of Bosses, and it appears that they're going to be leasing, well, they are going to be leasing the Odd Hill Hospital, uh, zone, so based upon that, uh, you know, I want the board to consider that, you know, that there would be no need to rezone that, that area because it's going to be, you know, well, we're trying to zone it so we could bring somebody in there, some radicals or something, but now for the next ten, maybe twenty years, um, you know, Bosses is going to be in there, so the current zoning would meet their needs, if the board is so inclined, then we just keep the zoning as is, that's entirely up to you, just wanted you to consider it. Also, now that we, we've talked about this moving the dirt pile, we're finally getting on it, now comes the hard part, is the funding, we had several, uh, recommendations made to us by, uh, our accountant, uh, I think there was four different ones, uh, thirty year, twenty year, fifteen year, and was it six year, David?
Yeah, seven.
Seven.
Seven year B A M. So, what I want to do is, is open it up, uh, for discussion on that, and in. and in two weeks, we'll, you know, we'll decide what we're going to do on it, you know, because we have to pay for it, you know, unfortunately, but, uh, that's what we have to do, and we as citizens of Ocean, all have to pay for it, so we want to find which way is the best way to, to fund this move of the dirt pile.
I can say that I'm in favor of stretching out as long as we can, right now, people are hurting very, very much, um, and while, you know, you look at the numbers, and paying it off short term, you pay less total, but I mean, I don't think the residents can afford the yearly costs of BAN. Additionally, I think the, this village board is in favor of finding new users that we might not have in two or three years, but we might have after seven years, so it would be a shame to hurt on new users after it's been paid off, because those new users are going to benefit from the waste of material plant. Um, additionally, as was brought up, I believe by Joel, actually, that, um, there are people that are going to benefit from the plant 20 years from now, that wouldn't be paying that amount right now, so I would be in favor of a thirty year one. You know, still, you know, open to other people's opinions, and, you know, I'm not 100%, but right now, I'm very strongly in favor of spreading it out, with the least yearly impact on our residents.
Um, I would say that I've changed my mind about this, basically based on the comments that Joel had made, initially, obviously, doing it with a BAN saves the most interest, and the further it's spread out, it costs more, but, uh, for the reasons that Joel brought up and that Powell just echoed, uh, especially for the older residents, if we pay it off in a very short period of time, uh, you know, I have a friend at work who's a contemporary of mine, who always says that he doesn't buy green bananas anymore. And, uh, for those of us that are the older generation, you know, paying it off in, in a period of seven years, uh, isn't, isn't fair really to the older residents who may not be here but have the benefit of it, and also, for the reason that Powell brought up, that I think makes sense, that if we're going to try to add more users, we're going to try to sell this piece of property once we clear the stockpile from there, that the longer we spread this out, the more of an opportunity gets us to capture those new users, also hopefully to sell that piece of property, so I'm also in favor of, of spreading that over a longer period of time, and again, it's going to cost the residents less. Doing it over seven years would make it pretty prohibitive, I think.
Yeah, I felt the same way you did, Mal, I mean, thinking at it from an interest perspective, it makes more sense to pay it off in the short term, because you save a lot of interest, but household budgets are tight right now, I don't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head, I don't have them here front of me, but it was going to be many multiples more per year, we can mature it term, so, although, from a finance perspective, it may make sense to save the interest over doing it the seven year way or the 10 year way, you can't afford it right now, you just can't, budgets are tight, and we have to be very aware of that.
Uh, what we, we are planning a vote in two weeks, correct?
Two weeks, yes.
And I'm just, my comments for them, because I don't have the numbers in front of me, I didn't, we didn't know who was going to necessarily be setting it for tonight.
Make sure you agree with...
Uh, so...
Yeah.
I'll make sure I have the numbers, because I think the numbers tell the story.
Yes, that's a good point. Okay, so we have, okay, citizens' comments? Yes?
Any word back yet as to whether or not the village is a member of the federal anti-terrorist network?
I don't have a chief, I haven't even followed for them on that one, have you?
Okay, thank you.
Ready?
That's it.
Ready? I've got a few. Um, at the previous meeting, it was, uh, there was a question put to the board about county tying in to the sewer line, has there been any further information gathered with regard to that at the DPW?
Right, the DPW?
Yeah.
The last correspondence we've had of them has been over a year, so it's not on the table in front of us, it's, you know, we haven't discussed it, they haven't reached out to us, I think, uh, you know, when it was last discussed, it might have been very real, but now, it's not.
Before I forget, by the way, thank you for the nod, it's appreciated, um...
And then the DPW of the county has changed, you know, chiefs in that period of time?
Right.
When it was first suggested, it was a different chief, and now it's a different chief, so that could, I don't know what I had any press or not, but we haven't heard anything.
The question that was raised, I think, was referring to recent, uh, events.
Yeah, well, we haven't heard of it.
Current reservoir level, are we back up to, are we back up to full?
Uh, not full, but very close to full. Sorry, I said that's a quarter inch.
Fifteen inches.
Uh, fifteen inches.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah.
With all the snow, we definitely need to...
Yeah, it's, it's been helping.
We may not need to clean it, but we need the snow for the groundwater. Um, CRV permit, uh, what's the status on that?
Awaiting the response at this point, we have a meeting set up for this week to discuss exactly those, for next week, we're going to wait for the snowstorm that we're going to do this week.
Um, as far as the removal of the landfill, stockpile, uh, works on that seem to have stopped, uh, what is the status of the, uh, work at this point? Has it been resumed?
Yeah, work is, work is ongoing, in fact, we met with the contractor today, he was out there, there's been some snow, there's been some holidays.
Was it stopped merely over the labor issue, or was it other reasons?
It was not stopped over the labor issue, it depends upon when the Middlesex County landfill is open, when they're closed, he can't, he has no place to bring materials, so that, that's been the determining factor. And if we get a certain amount of snow, the DEC wants us to cover it, so we'll probably be covered, I know he ran today, intends to run tomorrow, probably will not run on Wednesday.
Another question on that point, um, and I don't know if with, with prevailing rates, if this makes a difference, but is the vendor moving things at night, when it's, when there's less time on the road to transport it?
Uh, no, he's not, and interestingly enough, because we have, we pay double time to the union to move it at night.
At night.
Well, that's why I raised the question. I was trying to have it double, and...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Because I used to go back and forth to Jersey, and I know that, that my trip could be 55 minutes at night, but two and a half to three hours during the day, if you had traffic wrong, and that was just down to Jersey City. Um, I had a question about process on the, uh, contract, um, and it's a question that's been put to me by a number of people, uh, since, not just my question...
How to come forward to us and put some questions, or representatives of the people.
I, I have no argument with you at all, Mr. Mayor. Um, as far as I know, from having been here at all meetings, there never was a resolution passed, uh, to put out an RFP on this, it was simply tasked to the vendor, to the consultant, and it was not bid, or, or there was never, never a, an RFP request. Um, could you speak to that as far as the law is concerned?
Not required, it's exempt action because, um, we are in, in violation of the DEC, and I've been, um, on the phone many times with the Attorney General, I can tell you, one of the things that we're discussing is the amount of fine that we're going to have to pay.
That was next on my list.
The fine is directly related to the amount of time, the material is supposed to be cleared January of '08, and the amount of time that's remained on the site will directly impact the fine that we have to pay, and that is subject to ongoing discussions, um, but as a result of the enforcement action, as a result of the fine, that will increase for when we're there, it's, it's an exempt action from competitive bidding, uh, what we asked Cornerstone to do, however, so we knew we were getting a good price, is to evaluate all the other reasonable alternatives, and we asked them, as recently as today, to evaluate those alternatives, so the board had that in front of them before they had to act.
Thank you. Um, there was another question I had on that.
Can you answer the question? You're done, Ed, you're done, answer it.
That's bad, you wrote it down, you...
I answered another question, and I'm right about that, and, and it is bad, it's terrible, and I resent the hell out of it.
At the beginning of the meeting, I had a note on the O V zone, but I, I put it in my folder, I had to ask Meg, what is this meeting? So, don't feel, don't feel alone.
Yeah, well, I found myself down in the basement, having gone down there to get something, I don't remember when I went down there. Um, oh, here it is, I actually did write it down.
The new tip.
You just, you just made reference to fines, uh, and, and there was an article about the dirt pile and the record that made reference to fines, and, and a consent order. Uh, at this point, is there a consent order which will be signed, and does that include fines that have not yet been, you just said they haven't been determined.
Yes, correct, so what there is, there's an outline of the parameters of the consent order, with the Assistant Attorney General in charge, the files indicate to me, he wants to resolve this, and the surcharge issue, with the Lincoln tell, uh, file their final report on that issue, so, Christmas and New Year's, that he wants to finalize that in January, and at that time, all those issues will be discussed, and ultimately, consent order will be signed, but likely this month, could have lead into February maybe, but, but, um, you know, kind of is what it is.
Um, there's, there's one thing that is not a question, that I just think the board should be made aware of, um, the library is meeting as we speak, the library board, uh, you may already know this, you know, a lot of government happens behind the scenes, uh, they are again looking, uh, for property, they are again looking at the Healy property, um, you are aware that I've made my views very clear about the action of the board in the private marketplace, that being said, um, that apparently, the board is seriously considering, the library board is seriously considering, the Healy property, and I would urge each and every one of you individually to pick up the phone and talk to any board members, library board members you may know, and let them know what a financial disaster it will be for this village, should that property be taken off the tax rolls.
Did you call?
Hmm?
Did you call?
I have spoken to one board member, which is, I, both through gossip I heard, and then a phone call, uh, and watching the, the streamed meeting from December 13th, they are now, by the way, streaming, I, I think you may be aware, they stream their meetings live, archive them, and you go into their site, and you can watch the previous meetings. They had a special meeting, uh, the 13th, they went into executive session for an hour and 20 some odd minutes to discuss property, came out, and it was part two of the meeting, there was a meeting on the third of January specifically to, a special meeting specifically to address property, uh, that has not been posted, uh, so I have no idea firsthand what, what happened there, but you should all be aware that, that this is, and what has been reported to me from the board member is that it is imminent, they feel, uh, pressure to do something very soon.
Don't, there's no requirement for them to put that up for a vote?
Yeah, they had to, last time they purchased...
A referendum is what I'm...
I think they would be nuts not to go to a referendum, uh, but, you know, I'm not on the board, I, you know, I'm simply watching the meetings as you, you know, as an outsider as, as everybody else, so I, I don't really know what the requirements are there, I know that, that they have looked at a number of alternatives that have been obvious from their meetings, uh, now that Bocis is going into Arden Hill, that's a possible site, uh, I know there have been past discussions with the school board about that building, um, but...
Thank you.
Please let them know that, that you take that off our tax rolls, and it has very serious consequences for the village. That's it, thank you.
Before, I don't mean to make you go too over, can I give a real quick, uh, local boy does good story?
Of course.
There, well, he's not a local boy anymore, but, uh, he's neither a boy nor local, but there's a fellow that Mal and you may have heard of, his name is Marty Dempsey, Marty Dempsey grew up in River Lake, uh, oldest of five kids, all of which went to Burke, his younger siblings went to St. John's, younger brother wasn't with him, uh, graduated from Burke in 1970, went to West Point, ultimately got his masters, it due, came back and taught at West Point for a number of years, he also spoke at least once, if not twice, at our Memorial Day ceremonies here in the Village of Ocean.
That's funny.
But he was nominated by Secretary Gates last week to be the next Chief of Staff of the Army.
Wow!
Very nice, very nice.
Wow!
Yeah, I sent him a congratulatory email, responded this morning.
Are you ready?
Wow, that's lovely, that's...
Little kid from our, downtown Memorial Day parade, Chief of Staff of the Army, it's pretty impressive.
Very nice.
That is impressive.
Wow. That's awesome.
Okay, I understand motion, turn.
So moved.
Okay.
Yes.
You're favored?
Aye.
Good. Brother, brother, more. It was funny, when he was at West Point, I actually played by a cricket, and he had a friend by the name, he goes, Doug, I knew Doug, hey, I knew him, and I'm reading the book Obama's, this one?
Yeah.
And I just talk about Doug Hoover, you know?